To a zoning board of adjustment, and this is the November 9th, 2022 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at Nashua NH.gov/AgendaCenter. Please select the zoning board of adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-589-3056, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The board follows the meeting protocols and procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or an opposition will be permitted to speak again before the board deliberates and determines an outcome. A timer is used to manage speaking time. Kate Poirier, our zoning board coordinator, will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under reactions on a computer or the more menu on a phone. The chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your question or comment. Please mute your microphone until called on to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinances, the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, which are different than those from this, for special exceptions. Per the city of Nashua bylaws and state of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the city of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following full board members in attendance: myself, Maryelle McKay, Chair; Mr. Steve Lionel, Vice Chair; Mr. Jack Courier, Clerk; and Mr. J.P. Boucher. We also have the following alternate members in attendance: Mr. Jay Mankara and Mr. Josh Nahili. In addition to board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, our Deputy Planning Manager, and Ms. Kate Poirier, our zoning coordinator. Let us, we'll start the meeting by taking roll call attendance, and there's no board members attending by Zoom. And for this meeting, alternates may fully participate in discussions but will vote only if a full board member recuses themselves or if there are fewer than five full board members in attendance. Since that is the case tonight, there are fewer than five board members, we will alternate between Mr. Nahili and Mr. Mankara for voting. And in the purposes of the first case, Mr. Nahili, you will vote on the first case; Mr. Mankara, you will take the second, and then back to the third and back to the fourth. Thank you. We'll now take a roll call. Sorry.
Present.
Mr. Courier.
Mr. Courier is present.
Mr. Lionel.
Present.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I'm present. Alternates, Mr. Mankara.
Present.
And Mr. Nahili.
Present.
Thank you. I will now read the first case into the record. And again, Mr. Nahili will be voting in this case. Oh, Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda before we begin with the cases?
No, there are not.
Thank you very much. Nicholas J. D'Souza, owner, 18 Paul Avenue, Sheet 111, Lot 47, requesting the following variances: one, land, from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach four feet into the 10-foot required front yard, right side yard setback; and two, from Land Use Code Section 190-117E1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, excuse me, 23 feet existing, proposed driveway 23 feet wide at right-of-way, extending to 38 feet wide, beginning at 12 feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback. Both requests to remove existing attached one-car garage and construct an attached-two garage in its place. This is in the RA zone in Ward 6. Is there somebody here to present this application? Please go to the mic if we're really going to need to hear you since we record. So if it's easier, you can remove the mic from the holder or just pull it close to yourself, but please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nicholas D'Souza. I am at 18 Paul Ave., Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060.
Thank you, sir. The floor is yours.
This is my first time joining one of these meetings. Thanks to Kate and Carter for their help along the way. As you can see in my drawing here, I'm hoping to construct a two-bay garage to the right side of my property, taking down the existing one-car garage and building in a two-car garage that, in order to get the size that would be most comfortable for the build and most worthwhile, I'm hoping to encroach four feet into the 10-foot setback on the right side of the property. In order to get driveway access to that second bay, I'm hoping to encroach the 12 feet, or from the 12 feet of the front setback, a 25-foot setback, in order to construct the driveway appropriately to reach that garage bay. Do I need to?
You're good.
Sure.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Courier.
I was just wondering what considerations you had for the possibility of minimizing or no encroachment. What impact would that be on the right side yard setback?
On the right side setback, that additional four feet is going to provide eager for proper, adequate stairway to get up to the second story if I wanted to finish space up there. Also, trying to avoid constructing a garage in a size that would be uncomfortable to park vehicles the size they are these days and be able to open both doors of both vehicles if need be inside. I just don't think it's worthwhile in the long run to have a garage much smaller than that.
All right.
Mr. Lionel.
How wide is your current driveway?
Current driveway is about the 23 feet, I believe.
Okay, and you're proposing adding another, what, 15 feet or so?
So, in the diagram, the current driveway is directly in front of the current bay and then also to the left of the current bay, which is actually probably actually finished living space. So, that driveway would not be in front of, that's a 23-foot wide driveway, it's not in front of the newly constructed garage. So, rather than deconstructing that entire driveway, I could just add a small piece of driveway that would allow us to loop out to the new bay.
What will be the full width of the driveway at the property line?
At the street?
Well, no, not at the street, but what, 20 feet into the property line from?
Yes, roughly 38 feet.
Did you request a variance for that?
Yes.
Okay. Is that in here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
38 feet wide. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Oh.
Seeing none, thank you.
I can see.
Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Somebody on the telephone.
I see a phone, but, okay. That wishes to speak in favor of this application? I don't see anything. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Nahili.
I'm inclined to vote in favor of this. When I look at the design of the garage itself and of the encroachment, there is still enough room there for emergency purposes. If emergency folks need to get to the back, they can still get between the two houses. There's enough room there on the driveway. I do like how it's still the same 23 feet at the curb side, and the flare doesn't extend 12 feet into his, into his property line. I believe he's met all of the criteria that we put out there for a variance, so I would be inclined to vote in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in favor of the application for the reasons that Mr. Nahili spoke to. I think that the applicant, again, has, especially with the driveway, has done the best he can with what he has of the property. I mean, it's a, it's not the smallest lot in Nashua, but it's definitely small frontages in the houses. If you look in the neighborhood, if anybody has a garage, it's pretty much built almost to the property lines, the setbacks. So, with that, I'll support the application. And again, with the four-foot encroachment, I think it's reasonable. We still have room for safety issues, and again, just a tight lot with the current housing that's there in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I, I'm finding support for the four-foot of incursion. We're not hearing any concerns, and I see some other, what I probably think are concern, incursions in the neighborhood in a drive-by's. For the driveway, I'm struggling with that a little. I mean, I'm not finding any unique conditions on the property that distinguish it. I see the one, you know, there's, there's an existing driveway there that would otherwise come up, but I don't, I guess I'm not, I'm not seeing any, again, special conditions on the property, and I think 24 feet in front of the proposed garage, to me, is just all part of the construction costs. So I guess I'm stuck on that, and looking to hear some other opinions.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
I'm sort of in the same place that Mr. Courier is. I don't have a problem with the setback. Widening the driveway to 38 feet, I have a little bit of a problem with, and I understand why it's there, the driveway is currently offset from the garage, if I'm looking at this carefully, but I'm not a, not strongly opposed to it.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara.
I do appreciate those comments about it is possible to take up a portion of that existing driveway, but just backing up, I, I do support the proposal overall, just noting that, you know, having a two-bay garage is really normal and customary in our region, and the size of the proposed addition, I think, is reasonable. Could it be smaller? Yes, but 15 feet is certainly not an unreasonable dimension for a garage bay. Given that, in order to access that driveway, you're definitely going to have to add to the driveway, if I'm looking at my picture on the right-hand side, you're going to have to create some sort of flare to be able to make a turn and get into it. I do share the sentiment that it is possible to take some of the existing driveway away, remove that, and reduce the intrusion, but you would still have one. Even if you chopped 10 feet off, you would still exceed the required width, and I come down on that. I think it'd be a necessary hardship to take it out, you know, that existing stretch of driveway. And I would just also note that at, at the curb, at the front property line, it is actually below our requirement by one foot.
Thank you, Mr. Mankara. I concur with comments made by Mr. Mankara, and I also agree it would be a little difficult to try and get into that garage without having that area that extend out, so I support the application. Would somebody care to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Nicholas J. D'Souza, owner of 18 Paul Ave., Sheet 111, Lot 47, requesting the following variances: one, from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 14, four feet into the 10-foot required right yard, right side yard setback; and two, from Land Use Code Section 190-17, Section E Subsection 1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 23 feet existing, proposed driveways 23 feet wide at the right-of-way, extending to 38 feet wide, beginning at the 12-foot into the 25-foot required front yard setback. Both requests to remove an existing attached one-car garage and construct an attached two-car garage in its place. It's in the RA zone, Ward 6. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, as we discussed, special conditions are, again, the position of the house and its proximity to the side setbacks. The fact that the two-car garage will still be, would still be wider than the allowable, the allowable width of a driveway currently allowed in the city of Nashua. We find that the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding basels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Nahili, thank you. Mr. Nahili, how do you vote?
Mr. Nahili votes aye.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the side yard, gives it all kind of combined here, the side yard encroachment, and not in favor of the driveway width.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I also vote in favor. So, in that case, Mr. D'Souza, your application has been granted. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier. And anyone has up to 30 days to appeal any decision this board makes, so please take that into consideration. Congratulations. Thank you for your presentation, and good luck with your project. We'll move on to case number two, and Mr. Mankara will be voting in this case. Riverside Properties of Nashua LLC, owner Kathy Farland, Stepping Stones applicant, 1C Pine Street Extension, Sheet 77, Lot 11, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 253, to allow up to 10 transitional housing units for homeless unaccompanied adults, 12 beds for emergency housing, and up to 20 studio units with an existing building space. This is in the GIMU zone in Ward 4. Is there somebody here to present this application? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kathy Farland. The property address is, I guess, 1C Pine Street Extension, 3 Pine Street Extension is the mailing address, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Thank you, and the floor is yours.
So, Stepping Stones?
Kathy, can you please speak into that mic or pull it because they're trying, you can take it off of that. Might be easier. Thank you.
I feel like a rock star now, okay. So, Stepping Stones is a homeless youth drop-in center. We've been open at this location for two years, and what we are looking to do is to expand the services to the homeless youth that we service. The biggest issue we have right now is that these kids have no place to sleep. So what we are looking to do is we're looking to expand the hours that we will be open to overnight hours, which would allow for emergency housing, for our kids to be able to stay there along with longer-term transitional housing, which would be a six-to-12-month program. We actually do not have any immediate plans to do any permanent supportive housing, but it is a big building, so we figured while we were here, we might as well request that as well, so that if it does come up and the space does become available, we know that that would be approved. I guess that's it.
That's it?
I guess so.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Mankara, sir.
So, could you just explain what is being proposed for right now and what would be a future phase?
So, for right now would be the emergency housing and potentially six transitional units in some space that just became available behind our unit.
Mr. Mankara, were you through, or did you have any? Thank you.
That's good.
Mr. Courier.
I believe there was some similar applications for transitional housing or something in front of this board, right in the vicinity of this. I didn't know if that was your operation, or?
No.
Okay.
No.
No problem.
Okay.
What's that?
It was a different group.
Yeah, oh, okay, different group.
Can, can I add something, or is it too late?
No.
There is, in the, in the building, right next to ours, in the mill buildings, Good and Nashua Mental Health has added some units, and Hartz also has some emergency and transitional units as well.
Oh, thank you, Jay. I wasn't losing my mind after all.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, so there's nobody on Zoom now. All right, I have, I think, I thought I had three letters and so forth.
There's at least one in the packet.
Yep. I have a couple of letters I need to read into the record. "To whom it may concern, I have known Kathy and the Stepping Stones staff for about a year and a half. We have partnered together when some of her participants that are ready to take the next step to self-sufficiency. The services she provides these young men and women are leaving an indelible mark on them. She and her staff acknowledge those that everyone ignores and let them know they matter. They say it just takes one person to make a difference, and it can make all the difference in the world. By allowing Stepping Stones to provide these young men and women a safe place to lay their head and start some semblance of normalcy is the first step to their success. I have personally spoken, spoken with the population she works with and have been told time and time again that the adult shelters are not safe, and they would rather deal with freezing temperatures and the elements than stay there. That speaks volumes in itself. Giving them this opportunity helps break down another barrier and gives hope to those that have lost it. The bad weather is when we fear most for these young men and women, and now we can also have peace of mind knowing they are safe, save them from frostbite and the other weather elements we take for granted that can cause harm when we go to home to our families and our homes. I thank you in advance for listening to what I have to say. The bottom line is these kids are someone's son, daughter, grandchild, that may have lost their way and/or are escaping atrocities, that being on the street is the safer alternative. Give them the opportunity, giving them this opportunity shows them the possibilities instead of the impossibilities. Best, Mary Peters, Career Specialist, My Turn Incorporated." 3 Pine Street Extension Suite 2B, Nashua. In, okay. "I agree with this application. There are times when I, as an alderman-at-large, get involved with specific requests, but this one, I believe, is in the best interest of our community. We have seen an increase in homelessness, and I have fielded concerns from both residents and businesses that have complained the city doesn't do enough for this issue. Here is our chance. Do not let the chance slip by. Please approve this application." And that was signed by Ben Clemens, Alderman-at-Large. And, hello, "I would love to add my support for transitional living housing. I feel this with further support youth that are released from foster care due to the age restriction, helping them have assistance, finding jobs, further education, and become self-sustaining adults. Please consider voting yes. Take care, Lois Taylor." And I think that is all the letters I have. Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, and there is no one on Zoom, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher.
I'm in support of the application. As Mr. Mankara says, we've seen some other applications like this that we've approved. Not that that would sway me in that way, but again, we've heard, or I've heard, no negative, no negative feedback from any of these facilities that have gone in to make a difference here in Nashua. So, again, I think it's a good use of the property. I think it's reasonable, and I think it fills all the criteria needed to approve this application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
Yeah, in the past, when we've seen some applications for residential sort of use in a heavy industry area or the general industrial zone, we've seen like a salvo of local business owners speak out against it because they're afraid of how it's going to negatively impact them. You have, you know, folks living what would otherwise be perhaps a noisy industrial area, but those other variances that we've granted are for, right nearby, are for what I see is a similar situation as this, and those seem to be functioning fine, and we've never heard of any complaints. And this request is really more in kind with the use that's right next door than in general industrial use. So, to me, it meets all the criteria of variance, and I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
I'm in support for the reasons my colleagues have stated.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara.
I'm also in support, and again, for all the reasons stated, and just also note, it is a mixed-use district. We have 210 units of assisted housing that's going up a stone's throw from this site. We also have a significant number of units, over 350, in the mill yard. So it's, it's certainly residential area, and I think that it's an appropriate location, given proximity to support services, which are necessary and, well, need isn't necessarily the driver. I think, as many people probably know, there is a homeless encampment right on the edge of this property, which I think is a stark reminder of the need for facilities such as this.
Thank you. Mr. Nahili.
I'm in support for the reasons stated by-
I'm in support for the reasons stated by my colleagues.
Thank you. I'm also in support, and also for the reasons stated by my colleagues. Is there someone who would care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use variance for Riverside properties of Nashua LLC owner Kathy Farland, Stepping Stones applicant, 1C Pine Street Extension, Sheet 77 Lot 11, requesting use variance from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, number 253, to allow up to 10 transitional housing units for homeless unaccompanied youths, 12 beds for emergency housing, and up to 20 studio units with an existing building space. It's in the GIMU zone, Ward 4. We find that the variance is needed to enable applicants to pursue the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the audience. We find it will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the use variance.
Thank you, Mr. Mincarra, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Mincarra, how do you vote?
Mr. Mincarra votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. That's a unanimous decision. Congratulations. Kathy, you, your variance have been granted. As we've stated and will state all evening, anyone has the opportunity to appeal any decision made by this board, and they have 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department. Other than that, thank you for your presentation and good luck with your project. We will now move to case number three. And Mr. Nahili, you will be voting in this case. Daniel R. Green, owner, 48 Atherton Avenue, Sheet 47, Lot 314, requesting variance from land use code section 190-17E1 for maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 23 feet existing, requesting to maintain an additional 12-foot wide driveway. This is in the RA zone in Ward 3. Is there someone here to present this application? Please step up to the podium. And again, if it makes more sense, please take the mic so that we can hear you, and please state your names and address for the record.
My name is Daniel Green. I live at 48 Atherton Ave. I was requesting the driveway because I have too many vehicles. Just trying to add a space to make my winter snow blowing a little easier. But recently, what happened is I've had some friends that became homeless, and they've had to use my driveway for two cars while they're trying to find a place to live. So David and I talked about the driveway before we built it, and he said that if we stepped it back, we would probably be okay because we're not on the street with it. We stepped it back three feet, put a stone liner in, and then stepped the pad back, 11-by-22 pad, and it's not right on the street. The curb is still the same. Everything is still the same, which is we just added the pad to add more parking space instead of having to park on the street, because when I park on the street, we get ticketed, whereas I'd have to call every night for the police not to ticket the cars. So... So, David.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dave Terriolt, and I'm a Terriolt &amp; Sons paving contractors. And let it would just happen, I'll say right up front, I 100% responsible. I expect full responsibility for what happened. What happened was, when I met with Mr. Green here, I advised him that we couldn't pave to the road because having paved his driveway, his other driveway in the left side 15 years ago, he was already at maximum width. I says, you're at the max now. But then I did say I ill-advised him unintentionally. I says, I can put a driveway there but not pave to the road. What I wasn't aware of was the being too close to the right side of the property line. As a result of this, the driveway was put in. Then I found out after the fact from Mr. Mark Jennings, city engineer, Public Works. He called me, and it was then I says, oh, my God. I messed up. So he advised me to set up for a variance, which is why we're here this evening. And what I will do, one of two things, hopefully the variance will be granted to Mr... not Mr. Green, but really more me than Mr. Green. And if it's not, I will be... I'll have my crew in before end of week, next Friday. I'll pull it out and I'll re-landscape it. It was a total mistake on my part, and I feel what we did is not a safety issue or whatever. I just messed up. I've been doing this my whole life, and I did this. Anyways, that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. It's awful when our humanist shows. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Boucher.
For the order of property, how many vehicles do you have that you need to park?
I have a work truck. I have a pleasure van. I have a car that I run around for my errands. Now I have two other vehicles that are also coming in every other night that friends have, because it's on their restaurant.
So you got, right, so you got like five vehicles. And it appears because of the work van that I think I believe I saw, my... get me if I'm wrong, but it looked like you could get like three cars in the main driveway with the van and two cars, is basically, because of the van size.
Right.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? I am going to read... Excuse me? Okay. I have two letters here in favor of the application. Regarding case number two for 48 Atherton Avenue, owner Daniel Green wanting to expand his driveway, the owners of 49 Avon Drive have no objections to him doing so. Thank you, Shawna and Nick Forten. "To whom it may concern, we are Ken and Kay Stone. We are the indirect cause of Dan..." Oh, this is from you, sir, correct? Okay. "Putting in the driveway and the need for the variance. We own Kay Stone's Thai Dining and Lounge on Amherst Street, Nashua, and because of the employee shortage, we have had to house our employees. Dan, being our HVAC contractor, knowing we were desperate for a place to live, offered us his place. He expanded the parking situation, and the constructed driveway is just large enough for both our vehicles bumper-to-bumper. While we hope our living arrangement is temporary, we are still recovering from the COVID shutdown, and it's not the best time to buy a home. Dan didn't have to do this, but Kay Stone and I are very grateful. If this variance isn't passed, we will be forced to move. We are sorry we couldn't be at the hearing to present this personally. We both had prior out-of-state commitments. Thank you for your time, Ken and Kay Stone, at 493 Amherst Street in Nashua." Is there anyone here who wants to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? If you would like to, please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and either pull the microphone close to you, or you can remove it if it's easier.
Thank you. My name is Berta Denton. I've owned 52 Atherton Avenue since 1992, and it's on the adjacent property to 48 Ath... Mr. Green. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Atherton Avenue is a residential neighborhood. It's not a commercial neighborhood. It's consisting... consisted of modest one, two, and three-bedroom homes, many of whom have families of small children. To allow an asphalt driveway that accommodates two large SUVs to remain on the lawn of this family-oriented neighborhood would open up the potential for the loss of a serene, safe, and green neighborhood. That's one reason I'm opposed to this driveway. It's opening up a potential in this neighborhood. The other thing I think Mr. Terriolt already spoke to. Terriolt paving, according to the website, has been in business since 1956. To claim ignorance about the variance is a bad business decision. So he should... out of curiosity, I called a paving company in Hudson, New Hampshire, and hypothetically proposed this identical project for my yard. Over the phone, the secretary adamantly told me that I would have to have a variance from the City Planning Commission in Nashua. I feel that the contractor should have known prior to starting this project that he needed a variance. And that's all. So that's why I oppose this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a question, Billy. I have a question.
Excuse me? We have a question for you from the board? Mr. Boucher.
Yes, ma'am. My question is, the opposition you have, is it to the... is it to the extra width of driveway being requested, or is it to the location of the driveway?
The location. It also taking... the idea that it's opening up this green neighborhood to paving projects, and its location is only 10 feet from my living room.
Okay.
I sent emails to the board.
Yes, we saw that.
Yeah.
We have it.
All right. You know, again, I think a lot of people may not know, but let's say that the applicant only had a 12-foot wide driveway or whatever it is. The applicant, by right, could put a driveway in this exact location without any issues at all if he was under the 24-feet total width for the property. So he could, by right, put a driveway where it is right now. I just want you to just understand that. That is just one fact that, you know, I just want to make sure that you understood. From saying, because the location of the driveway, he can have it right there where it is now. If he hadn't met the criteria under 24 feet, you know, he wouldn't be in front of us, and he could have just put that driveway in with the correct...
Second curb cut.
Yes, yeah, I mean, he'd have to get a permit for it, but it would still be under the 24 feet. So he could have applied for that, but, you know, that. So I just want you to understand that the location of it, a driveway could be there.
Could be put in.
Could be there. That's all I just wanted to point out to you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Just pull the microphone.
Okay. You hear me now?
Yeah, just keep it close. You're very soft-spoken.
All right.
Just state your name and address, please.
Yeah. My name is Hillary Booth, and I live at 44 Atherton Avenue. I did send this in to you.
Yes, we have it.
What happened is, one morning, I woke up and this driveway was a done deal. It was a surprise. I really liked the neighborhood. I've been living there for 50 years, and during that time, it's been very peaceful, very quiet. My children grew up there, went to school, left. And...
Microphone.
Right now...
Ms. Booth, could you please hold the microphone? If you need to move your hand when you speak, could you transfer to the other hand?
I tend to do that. So I don't know where I was, but it's hard to have things so close. The houses where we are are close together. So when you add another driveway, even though you can, it's encompassing somehow on other people's property, even though it's not on their property. It seems as if it is, because these are not big houses. These are small houses. So when you have lots of driveway in the front yard, it's difficult. And when the big trucks, it's even harder, especially when there's one truck that has been on there and hasn't moved from the driveway for years, or at least over a year. And it's very peaceful for everybody. And I did put a fence up between the two driveways that existed before the new driveway, just to keep them from using my land to turn or to get into a particular position so they could park their cars. And the property is an eyesore when you look at it from the front to see all that macadam on the green grass. And it would be nice if it wasn't there. That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Booth?
No.
Seeing none? Thank you. And I won't have to read your letter since you have already
Yeah.
been here. Would the applicant like to respond to the comments that have been made? Okay. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier.
Well, I'm struggling with this application. I can't help but think about one that we're probably familiar with. It was just a few meetings ago. You know, I wanted to discuss that a little because this isn't the first time, and I wanted the, you know, the applicant to hear that we've seen things like this before, where a driveway, or suppose a driveway, is put in, you know, without a curb cut and et cetera. And I think it's... we consistently look at that as a driveway as opposed to maybe a basketball court or other things that can be, you know, kind of considered. I guess when we hear different testimony from a butters, like some positive and some negative, I don't really see it like as an average. Say if we get two letters in support and two against, it's like, well, on average, it's in the middle. I mean, if the criteria we have is if it's negatively impacting an abutter, you know, it doesn't say which side, but I think that takes a bit more weight than if another abutter is, say, okay with something. And I do feel that the difficulty, you know, or the unhappiness that's brought about by the driveway to the butters, I find that reasonable. I think I'd find myself in the same shoes as having, you know, a driveway real close to my house. I guess I'm wondering if the park truck is registered and inspected. I guess if the applicant came up, I'd ask that. And I don't know if that's... and just for a little more discussion, I didn't see behind the driveway whether it's a garage or no longer a garage. What's in our application says a garage, and I didn't know if that was being used, it could be used to mitigate some of the parking problem. But overall, I don't find this property distinct from any other properties, and I'm struggling to find that it meets the criteria. I'd like to hear other opinions as well. I'd like to hear other opinions as well. That's, that's where I'm at. I mean, we've also had conflicting testimony, we've seen, have some testimony that says, well, there's trucks parked in the new driveway. And we have a letter that says it's, you know, it's an otherwise homeless family that's parking there. I'd be willing to give time, you know, say something like three months if this board didn't find support, so the driveway could be removed. It would allow plenty of time to not create a problem with folks who might be living there temporarily, as we've told anyway, and would have the driveway out by the time windows start opening in the spring. But I've said enough, and I'm looking to hear some other opinions.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
As Mr. Courier says, this is very similar to a case that we had a short while ago. And I'm really baffled that Mr. Terio, who says he's been in business as long as he has, was completely unaware of the city's requirements for driveways. I've certainly encountered where homeowners have hired a paving company to extend or to add on to their driveway in violation of the ordinance, and they just, you know, they just hope that nobody catches them at it. And this thing about, well, if we don't extend it to the street, then it's not a driveway, they should know better about that. Like Mr. Courier, I find no special conditions of this property that make adding another twelve-foot driveway, a second driveway, which is not backed by a garage, according to the diagram that we have, and when I looked at it. So, I just don't see, I mean, it's unfortunate that there is this family, the friends that need space to live and park their cars, but that, to me, is not a sufficient motivation to override the ordinance about this, especially given the testimony we have from abutters on the side, on both sides of the house, that they consider this illegally added driveway to be an eyesore. The one, the one abutter letter we have in favor is from behind the house, and they're not really affected by this. So, I'm not finding support for this.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
I also can't find support for this application. I think it's out of character with the neighborhood. I don't see anything, any special conditions on this property that would warrant it or justify it. And it does appear pretty clearly that it's negatively impacting the abutters on either side. So, I can't find any support for the application.
Thank you. Mr. Nahili.
The letter from the Casson family definitely humanized this problem. I concur with some of the comments that we've heard before. This is pretty cut and dry. We saw the same thing two weeks ago, three weeks ago, when we were here. The way the driveway is set up with the two-foot stone at the end there before you get to the road, to make it so it's not a driveway, I mean, that's, there's nothing, nothing there that meets the criteria of what we should be approving here. Having seen that neighborhood, I did not see any other houses that have two driveways. So, I do struggle with that as well. I am intrigued by what Mr. Courier brought up, that maybe we can give them a little leeway on the timeframe to rip out the driveway. I don't know if we have that ability to do that here, so that we can help this family who has no, no place to go, and they are business members of our community. I certainly know the restaurant and the folks that run it, having gotten some food there once. So, that being said, I'm not in favor of this on a whole, but I would be intrigued if we can push back the timeframe to have this ripped out.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I was also, you know, looking at this and trying to figure this out, and come to a few conclusions, you know, things I just, that I recognize. There is obviously a parking issue right now. So, and two things. You know, it's testimony that the applicant says, hey, I'm helping some people out. I don't, you know, it's clear to me what, what he's doing, which is commendable. Again, I don't know what that timeframe is, so that's one, one thing. The other thing is, is, so we got five, we got five vehicles, and I think it was a family living there, just a family, who, you know, had five vehicles. You know, they would come to us, and I look at what's available, and if we, if the garage is usable, we still have one vehicle that could not be literally parked in the driveway. So, I'm looking at, at that right now, as that. Kind of the things that I consider is the neighbor next door, that this most affects. Obviously, we have a picture here with, with the view from her window, with the, they look like they have CRVs or something, they were smaller, but I know that in some respects it looks large to a lot of people. But these are smaller SUVs, but that's neither here nor there. One of the ways I could see the mitigation of this is, again, what the neighbor did on the other side was, was she had a fence, you know, more fencing, and I think that also gives a blind to the, to the, you know, a blind to the issue. And, I mean, certainly, you know, I don't know if there's going to be any support for this application, but if there was, you know, a stipulation to be that, that the owner erects a stocking fence to the, you know, to the, to a certain point to, again, shield what the neighbor is seeing. So, those are just my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. And myself, I struggle with this one myself. The neighborhood, the homes are small. I know the, the street well, the neighborhood. And to have that many vehicles parked, it's almost like a parking lot instead of any green space in a front lawn, and it makes it probably more impactful on the neighbors. I understand the rationale for wanting to help the family, which does humanize this, but it doesn't change the size of the house, the location of the house, or the size of the property. Those things are concrete. Mr. Falk, if the board was to find against the applicant, would they have the ability to extend the timeframe, as Mr. Courier suggested, for the removal of the driveway?
Well, the board can put forth a reasonable stipulation, if you find it reasonable to extend it three months, or say, six months. Right now, we're getting into the middle of November. Most paving companies are about ready to shut down. I don't know what their schedule is, but, and they'll pick up again in probably April, so maybe five, six months from now, is it reasonable? You know, as long as there's an ending date, as long as you see it reasonable.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everyone had a clear understanding of what we can and cannot do.
I mean, even if you're still going to not support the variance, you could still have a stipulation that it has to be removed by a certain date. That's, that's still reasonable.
Thank you very much. Okay. Does that help everyone, the clarification? It was a good point, Mr. Courier, thank you. Mr. Nahili.
Before we jump deeper and give them a date to have this pulled out, should we not talk to the applicant and see if this is something that he's willing to do? You know, is he looking for a further date? Especially Mr. Terio, sitting right there, who says he'll rip it out by Friday. Should we not ask them if this is something they want to pursue with that extended date to have this pulled out if we, if we vote against this variance?
Well, we'll have to then close this hearing and then to reopen the public meeting, or we could go ahead with the special exception in the motion and allow the applicant to make a determination that they could remove the driveway any time between now and six months.
You can still pull it out sooner if you wish.
Yeah, so that gives them the leeway.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
No, it makes logical common sense. It's what we're all here trying to do. So, thank you. Is there somebody who would care to make a motion? Mr. Courier.
I guess I threw out the idea. Let's see if I can follow through with it here. I'm going to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Daniel Green, forty-eight Atherton Avenue. Again, the request is a variance from Land Use Code one ninety-seven, paragraph E1, for maximum driveway width, twenty-four feet permitted, twenty-three feet existing, and requesting to maintain an additional twelve-foot wide driveway. I make a motion to deny this variance. I think the board finds that the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, because the board finds that there are not special conditions associated with this property that make it significantly different than other properties on Atherton Ave. I think the board finds that this existing driveway is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds that property values probably are negatively impacted, or are negatively impacted, especially by the property on the right that it's near. I think the board finds that it is contrary of public interest, and that substantial justice would not be served. I make a motion, I didn't think about, like, the winter freeze. When I said three months, I was just thinking of accommodating some homeless folks, but that's a good point. So, I'm just going to say, to me, by April thirtieth, that's plenty of time for the thaw and thinking that, you know, grass could be planted, or whatever, would go in its place. So, I make a motion to allow the applicant up to April thirtieth to remove the driveway if the applicant so seeks. And with that, that's, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel, for your second. And, Mr. Nahili, you will be voting on this case. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the application, I'm sorry, the motion to deny with the extension up to April thirtieth.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Nahili.
Mr. Nahili votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I vote in favor of the motion to deny. Mr. Green, that's four votes in the affirmative to deny the variance and to give you an extension of up to April thirtieth with which to remove the driveway, so it will accommodate the family that is living there. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Falk or Ms. Poyer in the Planning Department. And as we have stated, anyone has the option to appeal any decision made by this board, and they have up to thirty days with which to do so. Thank you for presenting tonight. Unfortunately, the board's determination is the board's determination.
Does that mean until April thirtieth?
Yes, sir, that's exactly what it means. Thank you. And now, I will move on to case number, our Hino case. Tracy Harrison and Michael... Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Godin?
Godian.
Godian? Owners, two eighty-seven East Dunstable Road, Sheet B, Lot six twenty-nine, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section one nine zero dash one seven E1 for maximum driveway width, twenty-four feet permitted, eighteen feet existing on Lisa Drive. An additional eighteen-foot wide driveway requested on East Dunstable Road for a total width of thirty-six feet. This is in the R eighteen zone in Ward Eight. Is there somebody here to present this application? Please state your name and address for the record, and if you need, please take the microphone.
It's probably easier. Hi, everyone. My name is Tracy Harrison, and I live at two eighty-seven East Dunstable Road. We are requesting a variance to add an additional driveway, which would increase our width, maximum width, over the twenty-four feet. We're on a corner lot, and so our street address is two eighty-seven East Dunstable, but currently, our driveway is on Lisa Drive. So, it can be confusing for some people. We just moved there, so deliveries, things like that, I think it's unsafe for people to double park on East Dunstable to drop things off or to pick people up. Even when we put the instructions in a delivery, they still don't read them and double park on East Dunstable. So, part of it is a safety thing. The second reason why we would like this is to have the ability of elderly family to be able to enter our house on ground level. Our current driveway, there's either stairs up to our deck, or they go in the basement and then need to go up the stairs there. So, they're not as mobile right now, so it's definitely easier. Right now, they have to park on the street and then walk through our side yard to our front door, or to the side door there. So, that helps with that. And then also additional parking. We have three vehicles and a boat, so I think having this additional driveway would really help with being able to park things easier. So, yeah, that's basically it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Courier.
I guess it's more of an observation, but that, the stone wall that kind of has a break in it, if you want to call that, I mean, that's been there for as long as I can remember, and I've been there since, like, in the area, going by it all the time for a long, you know, since like nineteen ninety-something. And so, it seems to me that that probably was there from a driveway or just, you know, occasional use. I mean, that's what it was, as I remember, just occasional use.
Yeah. Yes, I think the neighbors across the street from us on Lisa Drive have been there for a long time. They said it was always the intention of whoever the original owner was that built that wall to have a second driveway there, so that is why there's a cut there. So, I think the intention of the previous owners was to have a driveway available there. So, yes.
I guess another question I have is, had you considered, like, the challenge of backing out onto East Dunstable Road? I mean, in the current design, if this were approved, you know, if you pull into the driveway, you'd pretty much be backing out of the driveway and, you know, think about what it was like yesterday voting nearby. I mean, had you thought about that, what I think would be a huge challenge?
I think that the hours that we would be really using it, hopefully, would be conducive to making it safer. I understand what you're saying. I think there's been some concerns in my head of that as well, but I think overall, it's a betterment of our property and really helps us be able to use our property in the way that we'd like.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Minkara.
You had mentioned in your application the pickup-drop-off situation on Lisa Drive. Could you just explain what exactly happens?
Yep, yep. So, Bicentennial School is right across the street from us. I think there are some overflow, either teachers or professional staff, that also park on Lisa Drive during the day. So, our, we have cars lined up on our side of the street, at the, in the morning, at drop-off, in the afternoon, at pickup, and then sometimes we have cars there throughout the day. So, and it's only on our side of the street, because for whatever reason, there's no parking allowed on the other side of the street, except for on the weekends.
I guess I have one other question, and this, I recall, break in the stone wall, as I would call it now. How does that align or not align with the crosswalks? Because I guess I forgot that. I mean, I...
Yeah, we don't have, there's no sidewalk on that side. It actually, the crosswalk is before that. I believe more closer to Bicentennial Ave, which is, I think, closer to our next-door neighbor, and then the other one is right next to Lisa Drive. So, it wouldn't impede either of those. And like I said, there's no sidewalk there either, so it wouldn't affect that as well.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Nahili.
This is in the same vein as Mr. Courier. When you drive south on East Dunstable, approaching your property, your neighbors have some very large shrubbery before you get to that stone wall. I'm really concerned about, about that being a blind driveway. You know, we just went through the clock changes. We all know how that affects people's psychology and driving, and you're in a school zone. You know, folks are coming there early in the morning, distracted drivers, or parents with, with kids in the... with kids in the back. Are we creating a larger problem here by putting that driveway over there? And I sympathize with the parents getting up the 14 stairs, but we're talking about delivery drivers going in here. That means you have a different driver every time coming in, with the exception of the parents we were talking about. I'm really concerned with that area. That's going to be a potential accident spot on a very busy highway. Please allay my concerns on that.
Yeah. I think obviously we would do our best to clean out whatever's on our property to make sure that if we are able to clear. Unfortunately, I apologize, I'm not familiar with all the shrubbery, maybe I should be, but we would do our best to try to bring that back from the street. I think we would also make sure to have some reflectors there so it also at least draws attention that there is a driveway. So hopefully, when people are driving by, they'll see that. I also would like to think that we, I know this probably only affects us, but we would make sure to be safe with it. And I know that maybe that's not the best answer, but we would do our best to take all of this into account, and thank you for bringing it up, to make sure that it is safe for us to be entering and exiting the driveway and for whoever else might be using it. And I don't know if the delivery drivers will use it or not, to be honest. I know some delivery drivers still just double park regardless, but I think for some of the smaller vehicles, like the Sprinter vans and things like that, it hopefully would be easier for them, given if we were to remove some of that brush and things like that.
Are there any other questions? I have one. The driveway, the proposed driveway is almost directly across from the exit from the school. Buses are coming out, cars are coming out, and somebody from the driveway may be backing out. This could be an accident looking for a place to happen. Have you considered that? Because it's directly across.
Yep. We've considered it. I think it would be maybe the similar risk to anyone else. I know the house right next to us, their driveway is also right across the street from Bicentennial Ave, so I know it's not the same as a school exit, but it would probably have just as much traffic. So we didn't feel like it was any greater of a concern than any other driveway or road that already is dealing with that. And I think we would also be mindful of when school's in session and make sure that we're doing our own due diligence to make sure that we're being safe as well. So I would say we thought about it, but we had seen other examples of places around that had that, so we felt like it would still be safe, given that it is also a one-way for them, so they're only exiting. So it does still help with traffic control.
Thank you. It's just a cause of concern. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation. Seeing no one in the audience, and there's no one on Zoom, there's nobody here to speak in favor or with comments, questions, concerns, or opposition. So I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
I understand the safety concerns, and that's certainly an issue, but this corner lot, the fact that the street address is not where the driveway is, I can understand the desire to have a driveway that's more aligned with the street address. My experience with delivery drivers is they hate pulling into driveways, no matter how small their vehicle is. So I don't think that's going to help any, but it will help with access to the house from both delivery drivers and anybody else who comes to visit. So I think I would support this application.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
I do appreciate the, you know, challenge of having a driveway on a street that's different than your address. I think that is, you know, I would argue that is a special condition that doesn't impact this property. You know, that said, I do have some concern around the safety issues. I think the reason why the driveway was put on Lisa Drive is because it's safe. And, you know, vehicles backing out onto East Dunstable Road, there is heavy traffic, there's also high speed on that road, so that gives me some concern. And being located across from the school's driveway, you know, the school entrance also gives me some concern. So that's not a firm opposition, but, you know, I do see the rationale and the justification for it, yet I do have a concern for public safety.
Thank you. Mr. Nahili.
So I don't think my concerns relate on the safety. In fact, I think it got worse when you said Sprinter van. I wasn't even thinking of Sprinter vans, which, as you know, are longer and certainly harder to, for the driver to see. I firmly believe this driveway was put on the side, on Lisa Drive, for safety issues. I would not be in favor of this application as it is right now. I'm just really concerned about that shrubbery as you approach, even on the shots that we have, you can see all the trees and the shrubbery there. And I have driven by it different times a day, and people do go flying by there, and not even taking the school into account. So I would not be in favor of this as it is currently proposed.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
In general, I'm in support for a couple of reasons. I think that, that number one, stated there is definitely a topography change or issue on the property, and I can see where people who have a hard time with mobility would find it obviously much easier to use that driveway there. I will note that, yes, when I drive up and down East Dunstable Road, I live right on the other side of the highway, so I use East Dunstable a lot, there's several I call really blind spots, and I don't know, I forget the name of the street, which one it is, but you come down, there's like a blind street light. So, so not justifying the driveway, but I think what's little unique about this is it's an 18-foot-wide driveway, and I think it's not just a 10-foot-wide driveway, a 12-foot-wide driveway, so I think there's a little bit there. Speed limit's 25, right, Jack? On that, right?
Well, it's 30, but 25, which is good.
So I completely agree that speeds are, you know, excessive for where they need to be. I don't think that I would penalize the land over this because I think that there are several other driveways that we could, that I could point to that has the same issue, and it's just the challenge of, I think, living on East Dunstable Road, it's a busy road. So I don't see any of that, for me, outweighing a denial of it. So again, I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier.
You know, overall, I find support for this application. I, and I've thought about this one a lot, I think, most of the cases tonight, because I just wanted to reiterate what the applicant said, is during school hours on Lisa Drive, it's very similar to what it is around BG during school hours, where there's always cars parked there. And it does create a blind spot, even though Lisa's not a busy street. You know, the cars are parking pretty close on either side of their Lisa Street driveway, which makes that more challenging to pull out. I don't live on a street as busy as East Dunstable, but kind of close. And one thing I'll say is I've never had any delivery driver, UPS, FedEx, or Amazon, ever pull forward into my driveway, and I think that's because, you know, those professional drivers know you want to see when you pull out. They always back into the driveway, and I've talked to some of them about it, and they say, "Well, I'm not going to pull in forward because it's hard for me to back out." I don't want to design their driveway, but I would think if this is approved, I would think the applicant would want to consider having a turnaround so they can always pull out face-forward, but that's not part of this application. So I just, also what Mr. Boucher says is there are quite a few blindest driveways just down the hill a little from this because of the stone wall, and it's a beautiful stone wall. To me, it's kind of the character of the neighborhood. And I guess I'd feel differently if it was a situation where they were kind of ripping out the old stone wall, but that wall's been in there for I don't know how long, and this break's always been in there. So even though I do think backing out on East Dunstable is a safety concern, I guess I feel, oh, one other thing on the uniqueness of it, this is very different than the case we just heard in the sense that on East Dunstable, you don't even know the house has a driveway because it's downhill and back on Lisa Drive. So it's not going to look anything like it's overage of driveway. So for all I've spoken, I'm in favor of this, and if it were approved, I would just hope that the applicant's, you know, designed a safe driveway and take it from there.
Thank you. I think I'm not in favor. My concern is the safety, the school, a bus coming out. That road is crazy. People just fly by, and it, there's a bicycle lane, so somebody could be riding a bike. There's a sidewalk on the other side, school kids are walking, and the brush, the vegetation, the owners can remove and scale back what is theirs. They cannot remove and scale back what is not theirs. And I know when we put a fence in ourselves, I took that into consideration because we were going to come down and it was all the way to the end, and I said, "No, that's not good. The sight lines, you can't see." And so kept it all the way up. In fact, went from six-foot drop down to five because I wanted to make sure that the sight lines were there. Those are the things that really concern me. It's the safety issue. Plus, I don't know what the actual Nashua's actual rules. I know that you can't park within two feet on either side of a driveway. They don't generally like driveways back-to-back because it's an accident waiting to happen. So those are the things that I keep in my mind, and I say, as much as I understand the need and support the ease of somebody entering and exiting the home, the safety issue on the street makes me pause, and so I cannot support. Would somebody care to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Tracy Harrison and Michael Godion, owners of 287 East Dunstable Road, Sheet B, Lot 629, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-17, Section E Subsection 1, for a maximum driveway width of 24 feet permitted, 18 feet existing on Lisa Drive. An additional 18-foot-wide driveway requested on East Dunstable Road for a total width of 36 feet, so in the R18 zone, Ward 8. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property given the special conditions of the property. Again, we stated that, that one, there was, there's always been a natural break in the wall where the proposed driveway is. There is also a topography change from the driveway that's on Lisa Ave. We also nail that or recognize that it's not very clear to some people that the driveway, with the address on East Dunstable Road, that there is a driveway on Lisa Ave. And again, this is a larger property. We find that the benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will no diversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
I'll second.
And thank you, Mr. Lionel, for your second. And Mr. Minkara, you will be voting on this case. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Minkara, how do you vote?
Mr. Minkara votes not in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I vote not in favor. That is a three to two vote. You needed three votes for the variance, which you did get, so congratulations, you have been given your variance. And should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department. And as I've stated, anyone has the option to appeal a decision made by this board within 30 days of the decision. Thank you for your presentation. Congratulations on your variance. Now we move into business. Does anyone see any regional impact on our cases for?
No.
No.
No. No regional impact. Minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one from October 25th and one from October 11th. Has everyone had a chance to go over the minutes?
Yes.
Is there somebody who would care to make a motion on acceptance or non-acceptance of the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the October 11, 2022 minutes.
Thank you. I'll second your motion. And let's see. Mr. Nahili, you will vote on this one. Mr. Nahili, how do you vote?
Mr. Nahili votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier.
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel.
Mr. Lloyd, I'll vote in favor.
And myself, I also vote in favor. That's on the minutes of October 11th. Is there a motion on the minutes for October 25th?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from October 25th meeting.
Thank you, and I will second that motion. And Mr. Minkara, you will vote on this one. Mr. Minkara, how do you vote?
Mr. Minkara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, I also vote in favor. So minutes have been approved.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
I did.
She did.
And there's no motion for rehearing, and we've determined there's no regional impact. So is there any further business to come before the board? Seeing none, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and adjourn the meeting at 7:57 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.